We're going to call the meeting to order. Please stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you. Can you call the board, please?
Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lyon Welch?
Here.
Member Frederick?
Here.
Member Billsboro?
Here.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Dean?
Here.
Member Lake?
Here. Thank you very much. Next, we have presentations and program highlights. Mr. Hungerford is going to talk to us about the audit. Thank you, Mr. Hungerford.
I think this year I'm going to let you call me. We don't have Nichols anymore. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name is Marcus Sawyers. I've been here before. It's been a few years, but I see a lot of familiar faces. Good to see you all again. I have really an announcement. I'll go over the results of the audit as well. But, you know, one big thing this year, you know, the federal shutdown. But unrelated to that, there's a federal document that was delayed coming out related to the single audit. So that's your federal compliance audit, your grants, your federal grants. So on that note, we can't submit the audit yet. We're waiting for the release of that document. So another layer to add here with the government and what we're dealing with, with some of that. So we cannot submit it. MDE is accepting the reports now, so we're submitting a financial audit. I'll get your state aid and then the single audit we'll deal with when that report or that compliance something that comes out. Any questions on that? So it will be a shorter presentation. I just have the one report to go over. And with that, you know, I really just want to walk you through the report. I see some of you have it in front of you. Governmental financial statements can be a lot to take in, so I like to point to different areas, you know, for those of you that are reading this in detail. And stop me if you can.
Are you telling me you're going to have to come back?
If you want me to, but no. No. If you want, it's coming out twice. I would do nothing.
No.
Double the length presentation.
Stay wherever you are.
Well, with that, you know, the report handed this year was a good year. Thank you, Rochelle. The business office team deals with a lot of an audit. So, you know, we come out in the summer. We're here for a couple of days, lots of questions, lots of requests. We appreciate the responsiveness. I was just joking with Rochelle. She's one of our first up on the schedule each year, really just geared up and ready to go with our audits. I think that's really helpful. We have plenty of time to get through the work, deal with some of these groups. We have to jump through some years, which we're doing this year. So appreciate the preparedness with that. The audit opinion letter, that's the first section of the report. So you need us to copy and paste this. You need an unmodified opinion in the state of Michigan. Otherwise, you don't get state aid. That's never been an issue here. You always have an unmodified opinion and actually won't be here presenting if you didn't because the state does not accept anything less than that. So the opinion letter is clean. It talks about how the financial statements are fairly stated and representations made in the audit, to our knowledge, are true and factual. Jumping into the MDNA, this is your chance to really tell the district about some of the things going on here. There's a couple of sections that we get assistance from the district on, the general fund budgetary highlights, and also the district outlook. Those are around pages nine and 10. Also in here is a snapshot, some financial information. So what I like to point to really is page six, and this is where it talks about governmental financials. You really have two sets of financial statements. You have your district wide financials. Those include your pension and OPEB liability, some of these large, long-term focused assets and liabilities. And then those are removed under modified accrual accounting. And your governmental fund financial statements, remove that long-term effect. That's your general fund balance, your special revenue funds like your food service, your student activity, club accounts, that sort of thing. So a lot of the time, you know, at the board level probably is spent with those governmental fund financial statements, not the district wide. But here in the MDNA, you have the district wide financials. So you'll see what I'm talking about with the pension and OPEB. Those are large numbers. Those are based on actuarial estimates of what your liabilities will be for the employees here. And that's adjusted every year. So you'll see wild swings from year to year dependent on those actuarial results. Just paging through the MDNA a little more, there's some high-level information, some statistical-type information. And then when you get to the schedules, starting on page 13, these are the full sets of financial statements. Your statement of net position is on page 14. You have a positive net position, which, you know, most schools in the state have a negative deficit net position. So even withstanding the large, excuse me, the large pension liability of $35 million, you still have a positive debt position there. So that's positive. And then the statement of activities page, last thing I want to talk about here, tells a good story for really school financials. You know, you had your governmental activities. Those are all of your expenses of the district. And if you move right on that table on page 15, that's where I am, you'll see that there's program revenues, there's charges for service, and you have operating grants geared towards those functions, like instruction and community services and these sorts of expenses. And a large deficit is created. So that's where your property taxes, your state aid come into play to make up that deficit. On pages 17, there's a couple of other things to point out. Pages 17 and 19, I've talked about the two sets of financials. If you want to see the exact differences, those are the reconciling pages between the two. You'll see a lot of talk about capital assets, long-term liabilities, and like I said, those long-term focused assets and liabilities. But on page 21 is your budget-to-actual statement. So budgeting, it's a big deal at the board level, so you spend a lot of time with that sort of thing. And on page 21, you can see a lot of positive variances, a lot of really relatively small variances. So I'd say, you know, this year the district did a really good job of, you know, budgeting well and staying within those budgets. With that, I won't talk through the notes to the financials, but starting on page 24, various note disclosures. So note B talks about your cash, your investments here at the district. Note E and F are two good notes. One is related to the capital assets and one related to the long-term liabilities. And then if you want to really learn more about the net pension and OPEB liabilities, there's two very long, fun-to-read notes. Dr. Lake, I could come out for a personal presentation. I know this would be like, we can go over them in detail, but all those will tell you anything you want to know about the pension and OPEB plans and some of that actuarial involvement. Really what we do, this is audited by the state of Michigan, so we're really gathering and presenting the data, not applying as many audit procedures to this. Beyond that, in the back of the financials are some of the smaller funds. So starting on page, about page 60, 65, excuse me, are some of the smaller funds of the district. So your food service, the childcare fund here, special revenue funds like the student activity accounts, your debt service funds, those are presented in the back. Beyond that, I mentioned I will not talk about the single audit, but there is a letter included in there. It's a required letter that we're, how we're to send to governance. So we do that each year. It's our chance to communicate disagreements with management, large journal entries that we might have made, really any challenges that we faced and encountered in the audit. We don't have any. Said some nice things about Rochelle at the beginning. We, again, a nice clean copy-and-paste type letter, that's what's going on there as well. Sounds a lot. I'm trying to speed through it. Any questions from anybody?
You said unmodified, and I didn't see that in your letter when I was reading through the thing. It's in there somewhere?
You won't see the term, but the name for that is an unmodified opinion letter. So you'll see, if you want to look to the actual opinion, I can point you to it. So really, the very first page, first section is our opinion on the financial statements as a whole. And that's where we would indicate if we had anything other than a unmodified opinion.
How do I glean that from that page?
You know, I think it would jump out at you if there was anything negative in there. It's the best way to say it.
And I think I asked you this question last year. I always thought it was unqualified.
They've changed it, yeah.
But you're saying it's unmodified.
The GASP board likes to, you know, randomly change things for no apparent reason. They did change that some years ago from a qualified, now it's modified. Same difference. You want the un in front of it, unqualified, unmodified.
I'm old, huh?
You know.
All I have.
Experience, doesn't it?
Long time ago.
Experience.
Memory. Okay. Any other questions, please?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Good night.
See you. See you.
God, they used to be. They're beating us wrong.
Well, when you do everything right.
Oh, stop. You're not getting a raise.
Can't blame the guy for trying.
Next, we have the principal appreciation recognition via Mr. Flynn.
So we received a declaration from Governor Whitmer to celebrate and recognize October 2025 as Principal's Month, and I would like to read that declaration. Whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential to Michigan schools in order to prepare students for success, both during their pre-K 12 years and beyond, and whereas principals are entrusted with the educational development of young people and serve as educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, community builders, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers and parents to develop and implement a clear mission, high curriculum standards, and performance goals. And whereas principals play a vital role in the success of students by creating student environments that facilitate great teaching and learning as well as continuous school improvement. And whereas principals make a significant contribution to the success of pre-K 12 students by acting as the liaison between the school and the community it serves, ensuring that parents and the community are aware of student and school achievements. And whereas, the celebration of Principal's Month honors elementary, middle, and high school principals and recognizes the importance of school leadership in ensuring every child has access to a high-quality education. And whereas, during this month, we join educators, parents, and students throughout Michigan to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership and recognize and thank the hard-working principals in Michigan schools who set exemplary standards of service. Now therefore, I Gretchen Whitmer, Governor of Michigan, do by here proclaim October 2025 as Principal's Month in Michigan. And I would personally like to thank them for all of their hard work and dedication to our kids and our families.
Did we have the principals stand so that we can pan on the principals and mention that Toby Redden and Dr. Stephen Hope are unavailable this evening?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Next, we have the request for public participation forms. I have none. Anybody wish to talk to me? No? We have the approval of the minutes from September 22 of 2025, the regular minutes, and the closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of agenda additions and deletions. Are there any?
We have an addition to the agenda tonight, a recommendation to approve a quote from National Trails for charter buses for the varsity football team and ban to go to Lowell this Friday for our district football game. This is a request due to the shortage of bus drivers that the district is experiencing.
All right. Thank you. Next, any communications? Personnel recommendations? Mr. Flynn?
Relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education accepted the retirement, resignation of Max Larson Elementary teacher Amy Jo Billings effective January 2, 2026. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education approved the recommendation to accept the unpaid leave of absence per Article 8 of the CESP contract for Kaitlyn Blount, part-time supervisor at Jefferson Elementary, effective October 7, 2025 until further notice. The Board of Education accepted the resignation of Alan Fleming from the part-time RTP coordinator position at Lake Middle School, effective October 2020, or 25, 2025. The Board of Education accepted the resignation of Transportation Secretary Rhonda Sprague, effective November 4, 2025. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Christian Roberts for the subsupervisor position at Jefferson Elementary, effective immediately upon board approval.
And what is that position?
The supervisor position?
He determines when we need a sub, or he gets the sub, or what is that position?
No. The supervisor position is like cafeteria supervision, and this person is a substitute for that one, for the full-time. Yes. So a substitute person. Relative to extra duty assignments, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Jeff Scorefar for varsity boys' track and field coaching position for Coldwater Community Schools, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Cody Miller for the extra-duty position of varsity boys' assistant wrestling coach, effective upon board approval and successful background check. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation, Maya Zabka for the extra-duty position of JV girls' basketball coach, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education accepted the resignation of varsity girls' gymnastics coach Jessica Post, effective immediately upon board approval. And the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Randy Dudek and Lee Goodwin as varsity girls' gymnastics co-coaches, effective immediately upon board approval and successful background checks.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the September accounts for payment and financial statements via Dr. Frederick.
Be it resolved that the following accounts for September be approved for payment as follows. General funds account in the amount of $2,38,976.70. Special revenue accounts in the amount of $184,879.38. And be it resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the acceptance and approval of gifts via member Dean.
Small print paper. Those I'm not sure.
Oh, you want this page?
No.
Okay.
I'm good. I have my glasses on. Recently, we have accepted gifts from various organizations. The first one was Good Better Best Grant, gave monetary funds to Aubrey, Brandley, and at Max Larson for $350.
Claire, that's not the correct one.
It says September 22nd.
It's October. Those would have been at the September board meeting.
Does she need? I have it. No, I've got it. Thank you. I thought it was printed so good, printed it off my phone. So I know it's itchy.
No, that's the same one that's wrong.
It's in here.
On our page here, but here printed out is a much shorter list.
Thank you. This is on my.
Yeah, it's on mine, too.
It's not part of the pack yet. I don't.
Okay, this is quicker. Sorry. Recently, the administration was made aware of the following news offered by the donors listed below. Recognition and approval for acceptance of the gifts are being sought. First in Michigan, gave monetary funds to Ginny Blakely, the STEM teacher at LMS, for $1,000. Coldwater Kiwanis Club Project Fund gave monetary funds to Erica Towers, science teacher at LMS for Science Alimia, for $2,500. The gracious and continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be it recommended, be it resolved, that the Board of Education gratefully accept the gifts as presented, and be it further resolved, that a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board be sent to the donors indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, building reports. Anybody wish to add to their building reports? No? The Director of Curriculum, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a huge thank you to all the pilot teachers at all three elementary buildings and our elementary curriculum chairs. Last spring, summer, we were awarded the 35M grant, so they're working really hard right now. We're going to have some classroom visits and some roundtable discussions to learn which resource we feel will be the most effective with our kids to implement next school year for literacy.
Thank you. You're so serious.
I got it. Can I just add, this has been a huge undertaking. Four different pilots in three different buildings with all that staff. It's really nice that we have the opportunity to give our teachers the input because that's what we feel is going to make this move to a new curriculum for literacy successful, is that they've got the buy-in. And that it's not something we're doing to them, it's something that they're bringing to us. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Next, we have board committee reports. Who wants to give that report? You, or Claire?
Hi, the Building and Grounds Committee.
Good, you're up.
Okay. Recently, we had a Building and Grounds Committee meeting on October 15 at 1:00. We discussed the Aquatic Center. We reviewed the finances and the agreement with the ground trust. Heating update, Buzz gave us a great update on the geothermal units and the other units at the pool, and short-term priorities. An update was given on the work that has been done. There is potential larger project with the heating slash geothermal system. We are working in coordination with the city to get proposals on the appropriate fix to the system. A reminder that we placed the boiler, replaced the boiler last June, and that is helping. For Max Larson, overall, it was in very good shape. Going to get a chiller for the AC unit. This is the outside unit. It is original to the building. I think it was built in 99. Was it 99? Anyway.
She's asking you. I wasn't here in 1999.
Possible replacement necessary in the near future at an estimated cost of $30,000. The gym panel, which is.
I was going to ask, though. How long do air conditioners last? I mean, I have an air conditioner up north that was put in in 1984.
It's not used very often.
Oh, that's true. That's true. Okay. All right.
The gym panel, which is the wall that divides the gym, should be okay for the near future, but replacement needs to be considered and planned. For the exterior, we look, they looked at the playground equipment upgrade. Buzz will contact companies to get ideas and quotes for something that's more appropriate for the K-1, 2 age group. We talked about adding a bus loop because there's a bus loop parking lot issue. We're going to look at it as a priority to improve the flow of our special-need buses. If you've been at Max Larson, you know exactly what we're talking about. So, yes, it's needed. At Jefferson, the playground needs floodlights due to security and vandalism concerns. We're going to add gates and fencing due to security and vandalism concerns and safety of children. The PA system is almost complete. Looking at replacing blinds in the classroom for security and energy efficiency. The parking lot is a top priority at Jefferson. This, we believe, is the top project for the district parking lots. Surface and add a bus loop. Seal coat parking lots, night locks, and possible fencing. At Lake Middle School, possible offices added to the library. This has been discussed in the past, but never happened. We believe it will add useful space for staff and students in the building. Buzz is working on giving quotes to the plan. It's going to involve the window wall of the east hall in the middle school. It will be on the other side of that, in the library. When the bond passes, this will be included in the plans for a parking lot in transportation building at the high school. That's going to be rolled into that. The sound system at the gym at the high school is recommended for replacement. Currently, the school is using the gymnastics program's portable system. It is a recommendation of the committee for Superintendent Flynn to purchase an additional portable system that will get us through this year's sports as well as being used for district events such as graduation. Lincoln, parking lot is a second-level priority. The HVAC controls are probably going to need to be taken out of sinking fund as a possibility. There's a top priority as the current system is obsolete. The school was built in 1964. That was the year I graduated from high school. Buzz is in the process of getting more information, and we will try to confirm that this project can be paid by sinking fund dollars. And fencing needs. Meeting adjourned at 1:45.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we know how old you are.
That's okay. I'm pretty.
She was 38 when she graduated.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
October, in addition to the Building and Grounds background work that Buzz and I have done with the middle school students, put together a short video for promoting bicycle safety and has been showing it throughout the building. That was included in their weekly report. But a special thank you to English teacher Faith Pryor for helping the students with this project. We did our countywide PD day on October 10. Again, it was a big success. We're looking at feedback from that to continue to improve and make it successful in the future years. I don't know if I mentioned this, but it has been such a big success that Calhoun County is doing the same format this year for the first time. So they've been, especially their technology people, have been instrumental in helping with ours for the past three years. So they've, the superintendents in Calhoun County have decided to take on this format this year. So I think we're going to head out and see how that goes, too. Just a little field trip. County numbers are preliminary numbers for county for the fall. We're 2,918 students, which compared to last year is down 13 students. If you look at full-time equivalent students, though, which is a whole nother equation because we have, we share some students with the ISD through the special education program. And so that is 2761.3, which is almost equal to last year. A reminder that we budgeted to be down 50, so we feel that we are very safe in our budgeting this year. Rochelle and I have been working with the different staff groups in Mesa on insurance plan choices. Insurance premiums are all over the news headlines right now, and they're going up. So we've been working with those groups to tweak some of the choices for families. And open enrollment is being pushed back to November this year to give individuals time to look, and usually we do open enrollment in October. And then with literacy and curriculum, we've talked already about that and about all the work that's going into that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any discussion items? No? Action items. The first is the request for approval and acceptance of the 2024-2025 fiscal year audit report. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the 2024-2025 fiscal year audit from Hungerford CPAs and advisors and authorizes copies to be filed with the appropriate authorities. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah. On page six of that report, it says that the overall health of the district will be improved by passing the bond. Can you take a comment on that?
The overall health of the district being the financial security in, when the bond passes, that we're investing into new and upgraded facilities. So that will have an overall healthier outlook for the district financially.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the 2026 summer trip to Spain for Coldwater High School students through EF Education Travel Company. Mrs. Sarah Davies has got five students so far. I don't know how many more there might be. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the recommendation for an international trip to Spain in the summer of 2026 for the Coldwater High School students through EF Educational Travel Company as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
I guess, so this is, I just want to understand, because I think we've done this a couple of years now, maybe, just last year was the first year. How many years have they been taking this trip? Like, are they taking it?
They've been taking a trip.
Okay.
You know.
But this is not school-sponsored. They pay for themselves?
Correct. Correct.
It is. Yeah, it's, okay.
I've worked with EF Tours in the past when I was a teacher and assistant principal. I shepherded trips to Europe with them. Highly respectable program, and yeah, it's all self-funded. They'll either fundraise to offset the costs, or it's out of pocket. The school doesn't pay anything for it.
So is this, I mean, we talk about this here just because it's Sarah's idea?
Because she's an employee of the district taking kids out of country, so we would need to, we would need to approve that. And she is the foreign language teacher.
Right.
You know, tying it to curriculum and that type of thing.
They also go to Portugal?
In this trip, I believe they do, yes.
Well, it looks like there's two exit points.
So it depends on how.
Some people are leaving from Madrid, and some are leaving from Lisbon.
No, this is, this is just off of the website, so if they chose the shorter trip, they would be flying back from Madrid, but if they choose the longer trip, that would include Madeira and Lisbon.
Okay. But it's not, it's just, it's not really a school trip, though. We're just saying we're aware of it.
And that you support it.
But they're supporting themselves. They pay for the, like, you know what I mean? How is it different than just me going to Spain?
They'd like you to chip in a little.
Well, yeah.
No, it's just, it, policy of, you know, policy of approving trips that are overnight for, you know, track, or out of state for attendance.
Sure, but we, but there's hotel fees and stuff like that, right?
Right.
There's none of that.
So if something happens, we are not held responsible because it's not a school-sponsored trip?
Correct.
Parents have given their permission to send their kids off with.
Okay.
That's how I interpret it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Holbrook is absent. Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the proposal from Ritchie Athletics for a new pole vault and high-jump pits. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the proposal from Ritchie Athletics in the amount of $38,270 for the purchase of a new pole vault and high-jump pits as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Are we going to use one of them for a second?
Might be support on this, that's fine.
Any discussion?
When's the last time we got a new, sorry, when's the last time we got a new pole vault pit? Assuming this is not something we get.
Our athletic director believes that the current mats are about 20, 25 years old.
Does the athletic boosters have any, like, input financially into this?
We haven't approached them because this would, we feel this would come out of capital funds.
Any other discussion?
We did purchase the standards last year, which are the bar, the, hold, the bars, and I believe I've mentioned, if not, I need to mention, that we're also looking at new concrete pads for underneath the mats as well. The concrete's starting to show some decay as well, so Buzz is working on getting quotes for that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the invoice from Technical Truck and Trailer for the repairs to bus eight. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the invoice from Technical Truck and Trailer in the amount of $1,912.90 for the repairs needed for the bus number eight as presented. Is there a motion?
Support.
Why is this coming to us?
So I knew you were going to ask, so I did a little bit of homework. So the, the, there is a break where the manifold and the engine come together that have broken off some bolts. You need a special tool, alignment tool, to drill out the bolts at the correct angle because if you damage that, then you're replacing most of the engine, which is going to be a much larger cost. We don't have the technology, the tools to do that, and so when this type of situation has happened, as I understand it, in the past, these have been contracted out.
Does Frank's Transmission have the capability doing that? They service, I know they service the ISD buses.
I don't know the answer to that. I know that this is the company that we've used in the past.
How old is bus eight? And how many miles does it have?
I don't know the answer to that.
I tried to find that. I don't know the answer to that. Okay. It seems to me they would put that on there, you know? If you get your oil changed, they put down the mileage.
Well, they have it, or at least Kevin should have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the quote from Summit K-12 and online program for multilingual learners in grade six through 12. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the quote from Summit K-12 in the amount of $8,788.75 for the online program supporting multilingual students in grade six through 12 to be funded through Section 41 grant funds as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Is this a program that we've had ever or not?
Yes, and I think Becky even talked about it. She had some success with some of her students and children. And we're adding subscriptions because of the success.
We piloted the program last year with success.
Thank you.
And so, yes, we are adding subscriptions this year because it was successful last year with the students who used it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Obviously, I asked the wrong person.
That's why I brought it. That's why I brought it.
She came just to answer that question.
I saw her walk in. I knew there was something here.
I was backup today.
I see. Did we have a motion yet?
Yeah, we did, and support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the quote from National Trails for two charter buses for the CHS varsity football team, go-karts, and the CHS band. Administration is requesting board approval for the quote of National Trails in the amount of $5,326 for two charter buses. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approve the quote from National Trails in the amount of $5,326 for two charter buses to transport the varsity football team and Coldwater High School band members to Lowell, Michigan on Friday, October 31, 2025 as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
We've got to get him there.
We couldn't find two drivers. Do you still have your license?
Uh-uh, no.
I used to have a license, but it was for milk trucks, you know?
Same thing, get behind the wheel.
Okay.
No. I, I often think maybe I should get it just for some of these.
All right, did we get a motion?
Uh, yeah, we did, yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and comments. Next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, November 24, 2025, at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Sauk River Drive in Coldwater. Did I sound like I had a stroke? No?
I told you.
Or adjourned.